Welcome to this meeting of Dundee City Council's Children and Family Services Committee, which is being held remotely in terms of section forty-three of the Local Governance in Scotland Act 2003. All members in attendance are able to fully participate in the meeting which is being recorded. Should any member need to leave the meeting for any reason, can they please use the chat to advise of this? If a member loses their connection, they should make every effort to rejoin the meeting, but if this is not possible, the committee services officer will note their absence for the remainder of the meeting. If you have to leave the meeting due to a declaration of interest, you must remain out of the meeting until invited back in. Would all members please mute their microphones when not speaking to avoid background noise and turn off any smart speakers? Please start the meeting with your camera on. Your face will appear on the screen when you are speaking. If your connection is poor, you may wish to turn off your camera and see if this improves matters. If this doesn't help, you may wish to quickly leave the meeting and rejoin. If you wish to raise a point of order, ask a question, speak on any item or move a motion or amendment, please use the chat when the relevant item is called. The convener will then invite you to speak. Would members of the press and public please not post messages in the chat? Where items are for noting, or where there has been no disagreement expressed, the convener will call for any member who has a contrary view to indicate this through the chat, otherwise the item will be agreed. Please would members not use the chat for any other purposes, as those joining the meeting by telephone cannot see the chat and therefore will not be able to follow the debate. Although we are operating in a different way, this is still a formal meeting of the committee and the required standards of behaviour and discussion are the same as in a face-to-face meeting. Standing orders will apply to the proceedings and the terms of the councillor's code of conduct will also apply in the normal way. Does any member have any queries regarding this procedure? There are no queries, convener, so I will now ask the committee services officer to take a roll call for the minute. Thank you.
Thanks Roger. Convener?
I'm here.
Councillor Alexander?
I'm also here.
Councillor Anderson?
I'm here.
Lodge Provost?
Present.
Deputy Lord Provost?
Present.
Bailey Dawson?
I'm here.
Councillor Elnacla?
Yeah.
Councillor Flynn?
Good evening, I'm here.
Councillor Lynn?
Present.
Bailey Roberts? Councillor Rome?
Good evening, I'm here.
Bailey Sowers?
Yes, I'm here.
Councillor Short?
Yeah.
Councillor Smith?
I'm here.
Councillor Tolland?
Hi, yeah, I'm here.
Bailey Keenan?
Present.
Councillor Crookshank?
Present.
Councillor Finnegan?
Present.
Councillor McHugh?
Present.
Councillor McIrvin?
Present.
Councillor Malone?
Present.
Councillor Scullen?
Hello, present.
Councillor Shears?
Present.
Bailey Wright?
Present.
Bailey MacPherson?
A good evening, present.
Councillor Coleman?
Present.
Councillor Creighton?
Yeah, present.
Councillor Duncan?
Here.
Bailey Scott?
Here.
Mrs McBean?
Present.
Mrs Leck?
I'm here.
Mr Baxter? Mr Baxter? Markham is absent. Miss Barclay?
Hi, I'm here.
Mrs Javid?
Hi, present.
Mr Anderson McGinnis?
Present.
And finally, Miss Cox?
Present.
Thank you. That concludes the roll call.
Okay, thank you Arlene. Can we just move on to the next item of business, please?
Okay. Item one, declaration of interest. Are there any declarations?
Not seeing anybody coming in, so I don't think there is any, so we just move on, Arlene.
Okay, thanks. Item two, religious representation on the Children and Family Services Committee. The committee is asked to approve the appointment.
Okay, so first things first, I'll be happy to approve the appointment. I'm seeing nobody disagreeing anyway, so happy to agree to that. So before we move on to the next item, just want to welcome Mr Abi Bakar to the committee. I look forward to his contributions and taking part in the committee and wish you all the best. So thank you very much for agreeing to become the third religious rep and I hope you enjoy the experience. Okay, Arlene, can we move on to the next item, please?
Item three, review of the service estate. This is for noting.
Okay, we have the report in front of us. This is the annual report that we always bring every year. So does anybody have any questions or any comments to make? Sorry, I'm just going into chat now. So councillor Duncan, you were first.
Yeah, thanks, convener. Just got hopefully a quick question around the condition, the overall condition of four primary schools which have partly got connections to my ward and Dotty Ferry. I'm talking about Barnhill, St Pius, Craigie Barnes and Eastern. They have an overall condition score of C, which equals poor. And I'm just wondering if officers can give us an idea of what works would be needed to bring them up to a B and any sort of timescales around that.
Yep, happy to do that. So Mrs May, do you want to make a start on that?
Yes, thank you, convener, and thank you for the question, councillor Duncan. I will hand over to Gordon Ledlaw, our officer who works very closely with city development in looking at the improvements we need across our school estate and indeed our children's houses as well. But you will see from the report that any plans to move from condition or suitability or both at C to B is across the next twelve months. So in terms of the time scale, it's within the next financial year. So I'll ask Gordon Ledlaw to come in and maybe give you a flavour of some of the kind of things that would look like. Thank you.
Thanks Audrey. So yeah, the majority of those schools are intended with planned works over the course of the summer of 2023. The intended outcome should improve the building condition and resulting scoring should provide improvement on the current assessment ratings. However, other elements may continue to deteriorate or other issues may arise within different areas of building, priority assessment which could impact upon the overall score. However, there are plans in place in terms of addressing these condition ratings and looking overall for improved scores over the course of this remaining session and into the new session. The grading for the buildings is down to an agreed formula and requirements through Scottish Government. So we work towards that and apply that over the course of each year. So whilst there are those four schools, as you've mentioned, at the moment at C, it is the intention through the planned works to increase that condition and move it into similar rating to the rest of the service estate.
Okay, thank you, Mr Ledlaw. Councillor Duncan, are you happy with that response?
Yeah, I'm obliged for that information. I think from what Mrs May said, the twelve-month timescale wasn't unreasonable. The only thing, and I appreciate no one's got any control over this though, is the much vaunted, much talked about construction inflation that we hear about. And I just hope that doesn't negatively impact upon any of these plans.
No, I hope so as well, that it doesn't. But certainly if there's any issues, I would tell you, report back to committee at the appropriate time. But we certainly don't want to dissipate anything.
That's great. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Crookshank?
Thank you, convener. The first part of my question has been answered, so I'll go on to the second part. And whilst it's encouraging to say that all schools go either A or B on suitability, section four point eight of the learning estate report states that five primary schools are currently rated C in condition. Going on to the second question is, I note that B status is defined in section four point four as performing adequately but showing minor deterioration. Is that really the height or ambition for our children's learning? What more could be done to drive these schools into the A category? This sounds like a stick and plaster, which is more focused on a short-term bump in the ratings opposed to a solution which is to deliver in the long term. I note that Eastern Primary School is among most scoring tier conditions. The current site, when it opened in 2011, had been vacated by Grove Academy in 2009. What has happened in the last twelve years which has led to such quick deterioration in quality? And a minor point, Taview Primary School appears to have been missed from the ratings list. Thank you, convener.
Yeah, so on your last point, apologies. I was supposed to have said that at the start, that has been missed and that will be rectified. So apologies. I should have said that before we went into this report, so I apologise for that. But I don't, Mrs May, shouldn't we hand straight over to Mr Ledlaw to answer that? Or is there anything you wish to add?
Just a couple of points and then again, I'll ask Mr Ledlaw to fill in some detail. Yeah, apologies that Taview was not transported over from one spreadsheet to another, but just to give assurance that both categories for condition suitability for Taview are As and it was reported back in our annual report to Scottish Government. So it did make the return to the national spreadsheet, but unfortunately not to this one in our committee report. So just to pick that one up there, thank you for raising that. I would say in part to councillor Crookshank's answer, you know, of course, our ambition would be the very best learning environments for all of our children and young people in the city. And we, A categories usually come when we have quite new builds and so everything is like brand new and stays in that, that condition for a number of years. But we would always want to continue to improve the estate so that our children and young people have got the best environment to learn. And so, yeah, our ambition, I'm sure, matches your own councillor Crookshank. As far as Eastern Primary, your specific question is around when, what's happened to that building and the time that it's been Eastern Primary? But I would take the opportunity to remind committee that before that became Eastern Primary, it was Grove Academy for a number of years. So the building is older than it's been since it was Eastern. But I'll ask Mr Ledlaw if he's got any specific details that he could add to that. Thank you.
Thank you again, Audrey. Yeah, the main elements regarding Eastern Primary, first and foremost, Centenary Wing, yeah, that's the newer section of the building, but it's still now approximately thirty years old. And then the other element is considerably older. The works required generally allude to the heating system and also the windows within the building. There is a strategy being developed for the replacement. However, given the nature of the building, there are restrictions imposed from historic Scotland as to what can be done. And there are also limitations because of its listed categorisation. Whilst programming is intended, we also have at the longest a six-week window during the course of the summer holiday period without causing terminally disruption for teaching and learning. So that scheduling will take place over the course of a couple of academic sessions. But city development have that in hand in terms of putting together a programme and as and when appropriate, we could share that information further.
Councillor Crookshank, are you happy with that response?
Yes, I am, because you mentioned the timescales on councillor Duncan's question. So yes, I'm happy with that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So councillor Shears is asked to withdraw his question, so councillor Creighton is next.
Sorry, convener, can I withdraw that withdrawal? I've just noticed I've got a second question on that. Apologies.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that. You're okay with that, councillor Creighton, because councillor Shears was first before he did withdraw, but okay, councillor Shears.
Thank you and again, apologies for that. So it's a question on occupancy. And the table, table four on page six, show that we've got five primary schools which are above capacity. Rosebank, St Inian, St Andrews, St Joseph's and St Peter and Paul with Blackness and Our Ladies close by. And it also shows fourteen schools that are less than seventy, seventy-five percent occupied, three which are less than half occupied. And so I've got two questions on that. The first one is how do the overall capacities at Our Ladies and Rosebank compare to before the new Coldside campus was built? And is it like Harris Academy where it's a newly built school, too small from day one, especially with a lot of new flats going up in the neighbourhood? And secondly, a more general question, what more can be done to kind of smooth the distribution of placements and the design of catchment areas and to address the disparity between schools? For example, St Andrews is oversubscribed, whereas Arthur and St Fergus, which are very close by, are each below fifty percent.
Okay, I'll bring officers in in a minute. I would just say we dispute slightly that the notion that Harris was too small from the moment it was built. But also make the point when regards to capacities and, you know, where we are. You know, parents have the right to send their child to any school they want. And although what we can do is manage what we see for priority ones, those who live in the area with those schools, we can predict how many people put placement requests, for example, and of course, if the school has capacity, then we have to accept those placement requests in the order that we've done throughout the year. So it isn't just as simple as, you know, moving around catchment areas, although we have done that twice in the last five, six years to combat some of these problems. And if necessary, we would look at that again in the future. But I'm not sure, Mrs May, if there's anything else you want to add to that?
Thank you, convener, and again, thank you for the question, councillor Shears. I think, convener, you've answered quite a significant part of that. We have recently, just a couple of years ago, rezoned some of our catchments to pick up some of these pressures in our schools, including that Harris catchment as part of the bringing in Vergari into priority one status as well. So there's been a bit of work done there. Yeah, we have had a significant number of placement requests into these particular schools. As we've been reminded, it's always going to be parental choice. And we would always want to give a priority one children their place first. We have seen a peak now across the primary estate in terms of primary pupil numbers and we see that going into decline now, looking at projected numbers going forward. So with the rezoning of catchments, the numbers declining in our primaries, we would like to think that that is going to level out back to what would be normal, normal amounts of children in every school. The secondary roles look, according to our data, to peak at twenty-four, twenty-five. And again, we would hope, as it shows decline thereafter, that that combination of all these factors would normalise our school roles in future years. And as our convener has said, parents still have the right to make placement requests of their choice for other schools, but we would always want to make sure a priority one children got their place first.
Okay, are you happy with that, councillor Shears?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so councillor Creighton, it is your shot this time. Where do you go?
Great, thank you, convener. Just a quick question in regards to Blackness Primary School in my ward. The school is at capacity, but the report suggests that with the catchment area changes that were affected from last August and the intake will reduce in future years. And just a question, given that sixty percent of the role are placement requests, how can officers be sure that the role will indeed reduce, given that says placement requests will be accepted? I'm just kind of racking my brains about that. So any officer's help would be great. Thank you.
Yeah, no, happy to bring Mrs May in again. And as you're right, this is one of the ones that we looked at a couple of years ago to change the catchment area, just to make it a bit easier, because it hadn't been done since the building of the West End Campus. I mean, I would go back to what I said to councillor Shears, but I'll bring Mrs May in, is that, you know, parents have a right to put in placement requests and if there's a space in the school, then we're obliged to grant it. That's why there's no spaces that placement requests get refused. So that would potentially how it will be managed. But Mrs May, I'll hand over to yourself.
Thank you again, convener. Yeah, and again, you've more or less answered it for me. We have rezoned priority one children to the different schools in that area, including Taview and Victoria Park, so that all of the priority one children will get into Blackness because there will be more space, because we've reduced the numbers through that rezoning. And then, once they have their places, if they fill the school up, there will be no more room for priority two onward placement requests. So it's really important that we ensure that we've levelled and that's exactly what part of the last question was as well, about that rezoning, to balance out the numbers across our different schools. And it's something that we look at continually, as well as looking at our reserved spaces that we keep every year based on the number of children moving into the area, so that we're always making that attempt to ensure there's spaces for priority one children. And the first instance, not just in primary one, but if they move into the area throughout the school years as well. So it's all part of that same process. Thank you.
Okay, does that answer your question, councillor Creighton?
Yeah, it does. I wasn't having a go or anything. It was really just, I'm seeing the kind of capacity and the amount of placement requests and then the report kind of suggests it's going to move down, but then how are you going to say to people you're not allowed? I don't know, it just was curiosity. So thank you very much, Mrs May.
Happy, I wasn't having to go back. That's what you were thinking. So apologies if you did. Councillor Coleman?
Thank you, Mr convener. With regard to information on page five, five point four relates to Kings Park. Can I ask about the ongoing review of present and future provision? Can I please ask for more details from officers about the scope and timescale of the review? And ask if the outcomes will indeed be reported to the committee? I ask as there appears to be a clear implication in tonight's report that this review may affect the school role of Kings Park in future.
Okay, Mrs May, do you want to answer that? I'll give you the chance to answer it properly this time, rather than me just button in first.
Thank you, convener. And yeah, we're always looking at the role of our children coming through through our special provision in early years to see what the capacity is for them going into both their primary and their secondary education. And so we keep an eye on that and as I think committee will be aware, that in the last few years, we've continued to try and develop enhanced support areas to manage that, the increase in numbers of children going into Kings Park, into some of our primary schools, where we've developed specialised areas and brought in specialised staff to support our children, where we see that the pressure in terms of the building in Kings Park is under quite a bit of pressure. We also have plans in the East End Community Campus, which we have plans underway for, to enhance that area for children with complex and additional support needs, so that we can take the pressure on the senior phase of the young people in Kings Park into a brand-new purpose-built building in the east end of the city, so we can split the young people in the senior phase over Kings Park and into the East End Community Campus. And also there'll be a close link and partnership there with Dundee and Angus College. This is a good news story. And the reason why this number is growing and growing in Kings Park is because the head teacher and his team there are offering through great partnerships, in particular with Dundee and Angus College, much more vocational pathways for our young people with complex needs. And so they're staying on to school longer to gain more qualifications. So while we've got a success story there, it's putting pressure on the building, so we keep that under review.
Okay, councillor Coleman, are you happy with that response?
Yes, thank you, convener.
Okay, councillor Finnigan?
Yeah, sorry, my question's on capacity, occupancy and also like on additional educational support needs. On the table, table four, it lets us know how many school pupils are educated outside their catchment area, whether that's placement requests or, I was just wondering whether, how many children are assessed as needing their educational needs met out with their catchment area and have to go to a separate school to get them met and are they on the table anyplace? How is that recorded? And also to add, Ballylumbe, which is relatively new school, has half its occupancy. And given that the new school, the East End Campus, is going to be having children move up to that, is there any plans to, locations or any additional support needs, things to be used in this building? Thanks.
Okay, no, thank you. So again, I pass over to Mrs May.
Thank you. Sorry, you were breaking up a wee bit, councillor Finnegan. So apologies if I didn't get all your questions. But in turn, I think their first question was about children need to go to other schools out with their catchments, I think if they had additional needs because of the occupancy of the schools as we shared. I don't think we've reflected that in this table, but if we could come back with other information for you or further information if you're looking for more details there. But our children, especially for children, have got needs that have been identified and assessed in early years and in particular in our Francis Wright, which is our early years specialist provision for children with complex needs. And then we try to match these children to a support area, which is obviously, if it's in their own school, that's great, but it will be the nearest school if it has an enhanced support area, affectionately known as A R I S A's. So we will direct some children to specific areas for additional support. We could get the numbers to you. It's not really reflected there, but we could, we could get these detailed numbers to you. I'm seeing that our head of education, Paul Fleming, is also on the call and I wonder if he's got anything to add to that in terms of A S N, because again, it's a number that, it's an area that we see increasing pressure on the system as young people coming through with more and more complex needs. And so I know that Paul is working with that particular manager to look at provision going forward. So he may wish to add something to that.
Great, thank you very much, Audrey, and thank you councillor for the question, a very important one. I think building on councillor Coleman's question, as part of the ongoing review around additional support needs and some of the opportunities and challenges, one of the challenges with Kings Park and indeed Francis Wright has led to an opportunity that we were looking at these enhanced support areas and endeavouring as part of our strategy to have enhanced support areas in each cluster of the city, so that if a young person does need their additional, their additional support needs to be met and it can't be met at their individual school, we're hopeful that in time they can at least be met in a school near to them, in their area, as part of that strategy as well. As Audrey says, we can look at those numbers and get them to you, but that's a part of our ongoing review to try and have these enhanced support areas in a number of schools across the city, so that young people don't have to travel significant distances where possible, councillor.
Okay, are you happy with that response?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to tempt fate here. So councillor Malone has withdrawn his question, so I'm just presuming that you are continuing to withdraw that question, councillor Malone. I will move on to councillor Alexander.
Thanks very much, convener. Just to pass comment, I suppose. And I'm glad there's been a number of questions today on this report, because I would have hated it to go through on the nod. I think it's a significant report, not least because I was trying to cast my mind back to the first report we considered after, well, I considered, I suppose, after I was elected in 2012 and thinking how much our estate has transformed. And I think it's worth saying on record and on this call, first of all, to register my thanks and I think that of the administration for all of the good work that officers have undertaken, both within children and family service and with the support of city development, to bring forward the improvements, to realise the ambitions that we have for the school estate. And I think it's telling that most of the questions tonight, and I'm not making a snide remark in any way, shape or form, I think they were all valid questions, but the question's focused on the kind of four primary schools. But I think when you take the number of schools that have been improved so significantly over a ten-year period with a hundred and seventy-plus million pounds of investment, that shouldn't go unnoticed or unnoted. And again, I think, you know, we've been very clear during our time in administration that investment in our school estate has been a priority. That's why we're continuing to invest significant sums, looking at the new East End Campus and of course, the Western Gateway School, as well as the other improvements. And again, it's recognition of that investment in the school state to give, as Audrey rightly described, the best learning environment that we possibly can to our young people. We can't underestimate the significance of that investment or how that leads to improvement, a sense of pride, a real community within our schools as well. And again, all of that has been taken through unanimous support. So I think again, it's a testament to the working relationships, the ambition, aspiration of the administration and the good work of officers as well. And I just wanted to put that on record, because I think sometimes we do have a tendency to focus on some of the smaller numbers and not recognise the bigger transformation that we've seen over that time. Thank you.
No, thank you for that, councillor Alexander. I share those comments and welcome them. Obviously, we have put some significant investment into our schools over the last ten to fifteen years and I think hopefully, as it goes on, we'll see more investment into our schools as we go forward. So thank you for that. I see nobody else wishing to come in, so with that.
Convener, I've put in that I would like to make a comment.
Apologies, councillor Keenan. Bailey Keenan, I didn't see that, so I apologise. I'll bring them in now.
Thank you. I was just picking up on a comment that was made by Mr Ledlaw earlier in response to one of the questions and it was in relation to the
And it was in relation to the this, I think, eastern, where they were dealing with a listed building and the complications that that might bring with it. And wondering, you know, given that we have a number of schools probably fall within that listed building category, that we're in a position to deal with things very quickly when they arise so that our schools, you know, are 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 problems or windows or whatever are addressed as quickly as possible with it, you know, given that the constraints that might well be placed on it, we have been a listed building. I wouldn't like to think that we've got a position where we've got windows in the school that you know, we can't, we can't quite come up with the 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 solution that's going to suit the listed status of that building and and needing to find some other way of overcoming it.
No, thank you for that comment, that comment. And no, absolutely, that's not the case. And I think one of the other just one of the things that we we have to throw in as well, that I think it's it's important to note as well that any works that we do, we always try and do in out with term time. So to try to ensure that disruption at the school is as minimal as possible. So that will sometimes have an impact on when we will do something. Um, just so that we don't do it during school time, so disruption classes, et cetera. So a lot of this work that, as Mr. Leadlaw said earlier on, is is done um during school holidays, just to make things a bit more easier for everybody. But I'll happily ask um Mr. Leadlaw if he wants to to add anything to that.
Thank you, Convena. Nothing other than to acknowledge the fact that um Billy Keenan's absolutely right. The the restrictions that that uh may exist would not in any way hinder the urgency in terms of a an immediate repair that was required or works that that would um in any way compromise the building or or um any experience uh in terms of teaching and learning and and impact upon colleagues or young people within the building. So whilst you would uh wish to undertake any remedial repairs, it's more the long term strategy uh to align in terms of the appropriate materials and type of windows that would go in to to meet those listed consents.
Do can I ask, do we have uh an issue where we're dealing with at the moment in relation to sort of window replacement and needing to come up with that level of material or or design?
No, I think it's more just the 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 programming and making sure that that we are compliant in terms of what we're delivering.
Okay, thank you.
No, thank you for that, Billy Keenan. So with that, I'm just double checking. I haven't missed M D again. Uh, with that, are we happy to approve this report? Okay, Arlene, move on to the next item.
Item four, cost of the school day initiative update. You're asked to agree the recommendations.
Trying to get, trying to get myself off mute. So yeah, this is just the latest update on the cost of school days. As you'll see from the report, um, one of the the key aspects now um is that we, um, you know, this is all now embedded as appropriate within school improvement plans. Um, and that's something that we hope to continue as we move forward. Um, but Bailey McPherson, I see you the first with a question.
Uh, thanks indeed, Convena, and I welcome the report. I was just really wondering, uh, given that there's uh some examples of quite honestly, very good practice in appendix one in relation to uh the these issues, in particular, what drew my attention was, for example, some of the initiatives taken by schools in relation to breakfast provision and around fun activities, dress down, dress up days and to to ensure that there is inclusion uh throughout the uh um uh, you know, all the pupils in in schools. I was just really wondering if um officers could give an assurance that these good these examples of good practice are actually rolled out in a uniform way across the city. I appreciate all schools are different, but if you've got an example of, for example, breakfast being provided at one, you don't want it not being provided at the school next door, if you follow my drift. And I was just really wondering what mechanisms are in place to ensure that the good practice at school A is replicated at schools B, C, D, et cetera.
Yeah, no, thank you for that. I think that's an important question and I'll bring Mrs. May in a second, but I think it's important to acknowledge that our schools do work together on on issues like this. And and if somebody has some good practice, then it is often shared quite quickly to to be um embedded in other schools where appropriate. But Mrs. May, if there's anything you wish to to add to that?
Yeah, just just thank you, Convena, to give that reassurance also for Bailey McPherson. That that part of the work that we do, our head teachers and an ongoing basis and our development days and our our business meetings is as always to as much as is possible, share the good practice across the different establishments. And but I'll stop there and see if the head of education wants to come in with some some more detail or examples around that.
Okay, thank you, Audrey. Yeah, thank you, uh, Billy McPherson for the question. Something that's really important and and one of the reasons why we brought this report talking about things being embedded in schools, school improvement plans and not, if you like, an initiative. We want it to become something that's embedded. So for example, a couple of things happen. One, when it's in that process. And I see Pamela Nesbit here, one of the education manager, called our education manager and education officers analyse these school improvement plans and education officers who link in with all the schools then would share and so good practice at that level. As Audrey said, we do have head teacher development days where we share practice as well. I think it's also important with our every Dundee learner matters improvement strategy, we focus on the three Ps, so improving presence, improving participation and improving progress. So underneath these three different headings, we're in the process of gathering excellent practice and emerging practice as well, and which is helping us to achieve inclusion and to enhance participation, for example, and attendance and and reduce exclusions. So these are are shared regularly as well. Where, of course, an issue does crop up, and we have a bank of these things which which are perhaps solution focused approaches. So we absolutely share them in a positive way. But we'll also get in touch with schools where there has been an issue and ask them to to have a conversation, if you like, with the next door. An example that you've gave, Billy McPherson. So so a number of different ways that we make sure we share practice, which is having an impact for our young people.
Uh, thanks very much, both to Mrs. May and Mr. Fleming for that. I think that's quite reassuring that, you know, the the every effort is made to ensure that good practice is rolled out throughout the city. So I'm I'm grateful for these responses. Thank you.
No, thank you for your question, Billy McPherson. Uh, councillor Crookshank.
Uh, thank you, Convena. I also would like to welcome this update and note that the good practice and progress being made at schools across the city. In section five point eight of the report, it references the recently streamlined application process for the school clothing grant. In light of the cost of living crisis, taking an example from the housing report, I would like to ask, is there any scope for widening access to the grant for those who aren't in receipt of certain benefit? Like the hardship fund, I'm sure even a temporary expansion would be an immense help to families who are trying their best but still struggling at the moment. Thank you.
No, thank you, councillor Crookshank. Mrs. May, is there anything you want to respond to that with?
Um, I I see that um we've got Jackie Capello on on the call and she's just come on screen as well. And because we do vet, we do work very closely with Jackie and and other members of her team around always maximising benefits, always looking to see if there's other ways that we can help our families and to be in a better and a more secure financial position. So so Jackie might want to come in and just share a wee bit of that. So it's great that we get that 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 support across our corporate services. So thanks, Jackie, if you want to pick that up.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks, Audrey. Uh, thank you, councillor Crookshank, for the question. Um, yeah, as Audrey mentioned, we do work very closely with our colleagues and children and families to maximise um take up for um school clothing grants and and free school meals. Um, school clothing grants um is a statutory scheme. Um, and we have expanded the the criteria as much as we possibly can um at this moment to include council tax reduction. Um, it would be very administratively difficult to expand it any further um to include those that were not um in receipt of any benefit. But we can certainly look and see if there's anything else that we could do. But um we do try and work closely as much as possible with children and families.
Councillor Crookshank, are you happy with that response?
Yeah, thanks very much to both Audrey May and Jackie. Keep on good work.
Thank you for that comment. Um, I don't see M D L wishing to comment. So can this report be agreed? Okay, okay, can move on to the next item, please. Um, Arlene.
Item five, proposed Western Gateway Primary School with Nursery Class and Ardler Primary School Catchment Change outcome of the formal consultation process. You're asked to agree the recommendations.
Okay, this is the the findings and outcomes resulting from the Western Gateway consultation. Um, so the overall feedback from the consultation was noted to be positive and I support the proposals. And this report recommends proposals are approved and relevant stakeholders involved in the design development, design making for the new school through establishment of a project board. Um, councillor Smith, I see you were first.
Thanks, Convena. Um, I'd just like to start by welcoming this report. Um, and also by thanking the Western Gateway community for their very active engagement throughout the consultation process. Um, I think it's um it's to be commended, the level of engagement that they've shown and um involvement. My question really is just for officers to ask them just for some reassurance for that community about the ongoing engagement as the process develops, particularly with regards to the design of the school building and particularly the community facilities. Thank you.
No, thank you, councillor Smith. And I I do know that you've been working quite closely with the community. So I know how important this is to you. So um, Mrs. May, I'm just looking for you for a a response to the question.
Yeah, thanks, Convena, and thanks, um, councillor Smith, uh, for the question. Um, we are, like yourself, working very closely with community leaders. Um, who have, we meet regularly, we meet regularly with with different officers and different groups from the local community, just to keep that dialogue going. And certainly, we give that assurance at the the public meeting we had as part of this, this ongoing consultation, consultation, sorry, can't say it. Um, just just this last couple of months, uh, giving that reassurance that that once we get into that that design part of the of the the programme and once we've got a project board set up, we would absolutely want to engage um with the community to look at all these really important aspects of how that that school in the future could be at the centre of this this new community in Dundee. So yeah, absolutely give that that assurance and we'd want to model it on some of the great work we've done engaging the wider community for the East End Community Campus, working with V and A and Design Principles, UNESCO Group and so on, just to really widen um the scope of what we could do, bringing in community ideas and feedback all the time. So yes, I would give that guarantee that that would be our way forward.
Okay, you happy with that response, councillor Smith?
Yeah, thanks, Audrey. I'm sure the community will be delighted with that response. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So councillor Scullen, you're next.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, like councillor Smith as well, that I welcome the report and I know the families in the Western Gateway certainly will as well. Uh, I think that thanks have to go to the Western Gateway Community Group. Uh, they've worked tirelessly to see this come to fruition. And I've, and they've been an integral part of the consultation progress, as was just said. They continue to press for better local services and amenities for their community. And I'm very happy that we get to work alongside such a passionate group of people.
No, thank you for that. And just as as Mrs. May said previously, we will continue to work closely with the local community and the local community group um as we move forward on this project. Um, with that, is this report agreed? Okay, okay. Move on to the next item, please, Arlene.
Item six, Scottish attainment challenge update. You're asked to agree the recommendations.
Sorry, I was just trying to get myself off mute there. Um, so yeah, this is just, we've got a requirement to reduce the so huge equity fund spent by one point two million this financial year. Um, and this report outlines how how we plan to do that. Um, I see, um, I see there's several questions and there's a couple of amendments. So can I ask that the two amendments are shared with um with members? Um, and while we're doing that, I'll go into the questions and then we'll we'll come back to amendments once all the questions have been done. So councillor Coleman, you have an amendment, but you also have a question. So I'll just ask you for just your question at this moment in time.
Of course, Mr. Convena, thank you. Um, can I firstly ask officers of the proposed areas of spending table two covering this new financial year? Given that funding will be um cut by one point two million next year, which of these interventions will be or will likely be reduced or ended in twenty four, twenty five?
Apologies, got myself stuck on mute again. So I'll pass over to Mrs. May.
Um, thank you. Uh, I am going to ask our head of education to um come and come in and comment on that because this is a an evolving process that we're looking at that, you know, as we build capacity and sustainability towards this funding reducing over the few years, we are looking at this in a phased and tapered approach. Um, so it would be difficult to say exactly what might be cut the following year. But I will ask Paul Fleming to come in and give you a flavour of the conversations that we're having across our team. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Audrey. And uh, thank you for the question. So a as Audrey says, it's very challenging to be specific about exactly what areas we'll cope with. It's an agile plan um which we're continuously evaluating to ensure impact. And so we're working very, very closely, particularly with our head teacher group across the learning state, looking at the totalities of the attainment Scotland Fund. So the attainment Scotland Fund has three main pots. And the care experience and uh and young people fund, the pupil equity fund, and now this local authority strategic equity fund. And as the national operating guidance talks about, it's about working together to use the totality of these funds for additional activity to meet the aims of the Scottish Atainment Challenge. So so we have a number of projects in key areas where we have planned and been building on indeed since two thousand and fifteen. For example, in two thousand and fifteen, where and the local authority had a project around speech and language therapy, around building capacity, leading to sustainability, working in the early years. We always knew that that plan, once we had done that, would then move into primary one. That's where that plan is at the moment. We're doing some tests of change. And depending on the outcome of that, we'll determine what happens next year. So all of these key levers we're looking at, we'll have some activity. And but it depends on the progress, councillor, over this session uh in terms of the impact of the various projects and the building capacity, the success of that. And also how we are using pupil equity fund across our learning estate and how we want to come together with our head teachers to use the totality of that funds. And of course, we will, as plans progress, and keep committee updated. And but happy to go into provide further detail after the meeting if you've got any specific further questions, councillor.
Yeah, thank you, Paul.
Okay, so I'll come back to you um once we get to the formal stage with the gradual amendment. Councillor Shears, I've noticed that you've said you've got an amendment. Is it just an amendment or do you have a question or um will I just move on to the next individuals on the list?
Yeah, just an amendment, Convena. Thank you.
No, it's not a problem. So councillor Crookshank, you're next.
Uh, thank you, Convena. I noted in section three point two, the team report a loss of one point three million, bringing the new total to three point eight million, which is a cut of nearly twenty five percent. I likewise note uh future cuts over the next couple of years listed in appendix one. Given inflation uh and other challenges driving the public related the team ring gap that which the Scottish government claims it wants to close as noted in section four point four point one. Is the council confident it can still deliver on this important work with such significant constraints on budget budget resources? Thank you.
No, thank you. Uh, Mrs. May.
Um, thank you, Convena, and thank you, councillor Crookshanks, for your really important question. And and it's it's back to, you know, just reminding committee that this funding was never mainstreamed. And so it was always additional and additionality. So we've had to, from um the outset of this plan for sustainability beyond the exit of this funding. So much of our funding has been about investing in our people. It's been about training programmes, it's been about staff development, it's been been about building capacity in the people who work in our early years establishments and our schools. So that we believe the work will continue because I think I would want to to emphasise that the aim and ambition would be the same, that we would still want to improve the outcomes for all our children, whatever that may look like in terms of future pathways. But also where there are significant gaps between our least and our most disadvantaged children, we also want to close these gaps or at least narrow them as much as we can. So the ambition doesn't change, the work has to change because the funding has been reduced. But we want to build on the learning of these last now seven years of the attainment challenge in Dundee and take that learning forward from what has been a a universal offer with this additional funding to a much more targeted offer because of the reduction there as well. But also because we have had to plan for this exit. And so we've had to look at how we build capacity over the initial years of the funding and then move on to embedding that so that we've still got people who we've upskilled and helped to understand different approaches, use different resources and teach and learn in different ways so that hopefully our children will still continue to get the benefits of that going forward. Hope that answers your question.
Okay, does that answer your question?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, sorry, councillor Crookshank. Uh, councillor Malone.
Uh, I think I should preface this by saying to the executive director, this is not the fault of anybody in Dundee. This is a decision that was made elsewhere. And we're the ones who, and your team in particular, are the ones who have to make this work. So um anybody who thinks that there's any criticism intended of the the team is 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 kind of misinformed. That's not what I'm doing. But I do have a couple of questions. I noticed in the action plan of socio economic disadvantage, uh, socio economic disadvantage that the education skills would have a negative impact. I wonder if you could uh explain that or expand on it?
Okay, Mrs May?
Sorry, sorry, councillor. Thank you, Convena. Are you referring to the?
The interview session, yeah.
Okay, sorry, I don't have that right in front of me just now. I shall skim through my pages. But yeah, we, we, we're not entirely sure of all the, the impact of this. We, we know there will be some impact in different parts of the system, but we, we've not got a handle on what that will look like as we move forward. We need to, we know, but we must acknowledge that there will be some impact. And so we're looking at, you know, the future of our children and young people's experiences over these next few years and trying to really focus our, our efforts in a targeted way. Whereas what we've been doing for the last number of years with attainment challenge work has been to mainstream it so that it was everyone's business. We're going to need to focus in again. So there will be an impact, a negative impact. Exactly what that will look like, I think we need to, to monitor very closely to watch and see how we help our children or young people to get the best opportunities as we continue to build on the work, but with reduced funding.
Convena, can I come back in?
Yes, well, you have anything supplementary?
I know it's also from the, the report that there is no threat of redundancy for staff, and obviously we welcome that. But what we have is the inclusion of comment that says there is going to be a workforce reduction. And I think you've said, Executive Director, that you've already started this process of planning and developing staff. But I'm concerned about the impact on staff itself, because we don't have anything in the report that talks about the impact on staff. And I'm a bit concerned about the, the, the services that were provided have to go someplace. And so I'm concerned that if we are actually training people up to take on these roles, it's going to lead to a work intensification. And I don't think we have to look too far in the public sector to see the consequences of work intensification on staff health, particularly mental health and wellbeing. So there will be a reduction in the headcount. I, I would have liked to have seen some kind of comment within the report that said about staff consultation, particularly with the trade unions and the head teachers you mentioned. But I think that we would need the reassurance that what's, the, the wellbeing of our staff is being taken into account with every decision that gets made.
Okay, Mrs May, do you want to respond to that?
Yes, it, it, there's a lot of complexities underlying underneath all of the work that we're doing just now. I'm sure councillor Malone would appreciate because it is about movement, it's about retirements, it's about secondments coming to a completion. You know, where there were temporary posts, it's about people who were out on secondment from schools who could go back into schools. You know, it's quite a complex picture. And it's about some roles being redefined. But I would want to give you assurance that we would absolutely have, have lots of discussions with the staff directly involved and already have done and in consultation with our head teachers as well. I would ask if Paul wants to come in on any, any additional details on that about the work to date? Because this is an ongoing discussion for our education team, as, as you rightly recognised. But, but we, we've got to find a way through it and, and that's what we've been working on. And with the, the least negative impact that we can have. And so I'll ask Paul to, to share some of the detail around some of that movement around staff. But there's, the, the more detail we can bring to it with committee. Paul, do you want to add anything to that?
Thanks very much, Audrey, and thanks for the question. It's really important about looking after our workforce, who are then supporting our, our children, our young people and our families. And, and as Audrey said, it's very, very complex and lots of moving fees. And one of the things we want to do is for this, obviously, report to be, to be accepted as well. So our education manager has informed unions, of course, about this next steps, and we have plans to meet with or have already met with, depending on which part of the planner involved in staff, and to talk to them about any changes. What I would say as well, in addition to this, is whilst it can be challenging, there are some opportunities. So for example, in the early part of the Scottish Atainment Challenge, there was understandably a targeted focus on, for example, eleven primary schools in Dundee. We recognise now that there's young people across all of Dundee who would benefit from this funding. So we're looking at some of the roles that were involved in these eleven schools and looking at some of the other activity that we want to enhance, for example, and uptake of free school meals, enhancing the dining experience and so on. And we are trying to move some of these roles into mainstream funding into our revenue, support young people across different schools in similar types of roles as well. So we're doing everything we can to support our workforce. And we understand it will, it's, it's a challenging time, but we'll look to continuously engage and have had for a month of discussions with our head teachers as well, who'll be available on a local basis, obviously, to support staff in their individual settings as well. And as Audrey said, happy to provide further detail, councillor, as those discussions are on and, and plans are ongoing. Hope that helps.
Okay, Councillor Malone, you happy with that response?
I mean, I kind of anticipated the response, but I just felt it necessary for it to, can it be raised so we could clarify that situation? As I said in my preface, this is not a criticism of the executive director and the team. In fact, I think we should be rightly proud of the education provision from our teachers who work hard, particularly through COVID and onwards. And we should recognise that, okay, there, there's a generation of children that are facing a big challenge. And we shouldn't ship that challenge. But I'm reassured that we've actually taken steps, particularly discussing with the trade unions on how we might mitigate some of these cuts. But it won't be easy. And I'm sure Audrey and our team know that.
No, absolutely. And thank you for that. And I certainly share your comments regarding our, our staff. And it's not just the teaching staff, but all the staff in our schools who've done a fantastic job, particularly over the last challenging couple of years. And certainly would want to make sure that that was recognised as well. Bailey Keenan, you're next.
Yeah, firstly, Convena, I would say that, in, in reading these two motions, that we would be quite happy to withdraw the Labour Group's motion or amendment and, and support the Lib Dems going forward as we believe that it is, tries to achieve something very similar that we were looking for ourselves. And, and moving on to a, a comment or a, or a question in relation to the report. Convena, it's obviously your report and, you know, it's a huge cut that's happening to the Education Department in the city. We, five million quid being taken out of it. You know, twenty odd jobs last year, now twenty odd this year. You know, huge amount of hours of education and education delivery and service taken out. And it's no like it was a job creation scheme just to put people into place for the sake of spending the money. All these positions would have been picked by the education staff to make sure that they were delivering against the objective of closing that poverty attainment gap and, and making a real difference. So, you know, I feel to see that in, in the quality impact assessment that in areas such as fairness and poverty, right through the city, there is, it's all unknown. So we don't know what level of impact it's going to have, given that we could well be seeing at the end of this, a hundred individuals taking out education. You know, huge amount of hours delivered in classroom time or working with kids, even with that time and preparation work that went on it. So a huge amount. And it, and it looks like, you know, the, the, the impact assessment is more concerned about the, the reputational damage of council and its political or reputation. So, I mean, I'd, I'd like to comment for yourself as to why you didn't particularly see that, that there's a huge impact and, and why you think this quality impact assessment is adequate. You know, and why, you know, if it's the case, would you know we'd just be saying, let's support the motion and go forward?
Well, we'll see what happens when we get to the, the formal stage, Bailey Keenan. I make the point that Mrs May has already answered specifically the point about the impact assessment. And quite rightly, that's written by officers and, and is not written by myself or has an input by myself. Quite rightly, that's the, the work of officers. And I don't think you'd expect that to be any other way. However, you know, we do recognise that this is going to be a significant challenge. And Mrs May has already gone into detail about why, what we're trying to do to mitigate that. So I'm not sure there's much more for me to say. But Mrs May, if there's anything else you want to add about the impact assessment, I'll, I'll bring you in at this stage.
Well, I probably just find myself repeating some of what I said earlier, Convena and, and Billy Keenan. You know, we, we, we aren't quite sure exactly what all the impacts will look like, but what we need to do is really monitor closely. You know, the difference it makes as we move, move people around the system and, and into different roles, which will help us to be really targeted. And we have rolled out a lot of really great work over the last five to seven years of the attainment challenge work. And we, we now need to just really focus in on where the greatest level of need is. And because we have a, a reduced resource. But, but through constant review and monitoring and really close tracking of the situation in all our schools for all our children and young people, which we are asking our head teachers to do, which we're asking our staffs to do, and our other workers who work with community and family, to keep that, that work going. You know, that, that won't stop and will continue. But we don't know exactly what the impacts will be. And apologies if that's not been helpful for you in the IIA. But certainly, we plan to monitor it very closely so that we can mitigate against it as much as is possible.
Convena, can, can I have a follow up?
Yes.
I mean, I see that the, the, the report that's put forward is coming from yourself. So even that impact assessments went up with your blessing, because you could have picked up on it at your convener's meeting. And what, what we'd say is that we've had a year where there was twenty odd posts taken out. So what impact has that twenty odd post had on, on education moving forward? So there must be some level of assessment, because we knew the jobs that were started and what they were meant to do and what they were meant to achieve, and that's been taken out. So, you know, I think we need a bit more of an explanation than we don't know what any impact would be. You know, I don't see officers at fault with this. I see you.
Well, thank you for that, Bailey Keenan. And I'll certainly, from now on, we'll start writing all the officer's reports for them. I think that, that's what you're suggesting. I would just make the slight point that if you remember last year's budget, the administration group actually put more money back into the attainment challenge fund. That was part of our budget proposals and to try and mitigate some of the, the decisions that we had to take last year. So I think that's worth considering, which I think hasn't been highlighted so far. I think Mrs May has already gone into quite significant detail about why we're still working out exactly what the, the mitigation we needed put in place is and the impact of these decisions. Not forgetting the fact that, as I said, we put money back into the attainment challenge out of the budget last year to try and ensure that some of that didn't need to be done. So I think that's worth recognising at this stage as well. So with that, I think that you've had the answer to your, your question from Mrs May several times now and from myself. So with that, I'm now going to move to the formal stage. And councillor Coleman, you have your amendment. I'll let you speak to it.
Thank you, Mr Convena. I wish to make an amendment which highlights our concerns about the strategic equity funding cuts. The cuts to Dundee's share of the Scottish attainment fund have long been highlighted, but the Scottish Government has not yet acted these concerns and it's clear in the report there are still yet to be severe cuts to be had. The report accepts that the funding cuts will mean redeployment of staff away from the attainment effort and non-filling of posts at retirements and the end of secondments. This is indeed all very sad. It is vital if Dundee is to continue to improve attainment right across our schools and give additional support where it is most needed. The report highlights the good work on attainment currently underway in schools thanks to this funding. This includes speech and language therapy, targeted support to help overcome barriers to learning, improved parental engagement and health and wellbeing. The funding for these initiatives will be greatly reduced still further as we head towards 2025. So I'm asking committee to make further lobbying efforts to convince Cabinet Secretary for Education and Skills Shirley Anne Somerville to think again and stop any further cuts to Dundee's funding, restoring funding to its 2021 levels. I believe Bailey McPherson will second me.
Okay, thank you for that, Councillor Coleman. Bailey McPherson, I'll let you into second.
Thanks indeed, Convena. And I do indeed wish to second councillor Coleman. The forest, the former head teacher of Harris Academy, who I got to know very well over the fourteen years. I was first on the council, as it were, Jim Thule, now General Secretary of School Leaders Scotland. Previously said at the time, the initial announcement was made at the, of, of the cuts to the nine challenge authorities. He said to the Scottish Parliament's Education, Children and Young People Committee, and I'll quote, "When we look at the attainment challenge funding to begin with, it was directed at deprivation and nine areas were picked up. We know that the number of young people impacted by deprivation in these nine challenge areas, surely it is immoral to take away that funding." Jim has held, I'm sure everybody would agree, in the highest regard, and I completely agree with his analysis that the cuts to the Scottish attainment challenge funding in these nine challenge authorities, including our own, will have an adverse impact on us tackling the attainment gap between the advantaged and the disadvantaged pupils across the school estate, in particular, schools that have been targeted by this funding. If I go back to, I actually dug out the original report when the Scottish attainment challenge was first launched back in 2015. It was a report to the then Education Committee on the 27th of April, 2015. And it said that the Scottish Government was committed to the principles of improving the lives of young people in Dundee, including improved early social and emotional development, closely linked to language development, raised attainment and literacy, numeracy, health and wellbeing, improved engagement between schools, pupils, parents and carers, increased opportunities for skills for learning, life and work, as well as increasing employability opportunities with improved positive destinations for our pupils and in particular, those in the targeted schools. And I fully accept, Convena, you did put some more money back in last year. But quite frankly, that was to mitigate the effects of your own government's slashing of the, the, the funding, which over the period of the reductions will amount to nearly eighty percent. Now, it's a seventy nine percent reduction by 2025, 26. And it's pretty disastrous in terms of what we're hoping to achieve. And actually, we can see real outcomes already from the time that we've had the, the, the higher levels of funding. So we feel that we must, as a city council, come together to redouble our efforts to highlight the issue, to lobby Scottish government to restore Dundee's funding to the 6.2 million level it received in 2021, 22. If these funding cuts continue year on year as projected, we feel it will fail the city and its young people. And we think it's absolutely vital that we at least lobby Scottish government, hence the amendment in councillor Coleman's name, which I am pleased to second, Convena. Thank you.
No, thank you, Billy McPherson. So councillor Shears, you would have been next, but Bailey Keenan has indicated that they're willing to, your group's willing to withdraw your amendment and support the Liberal Democrat amendment. Is that, is that correct? Actually, you're, you're happy with that?
Yep, that's all right.
Okay, so coming to the amendment. So just to be clear, I have already written to the Cabinet Secretary outlining the very concerns that have been raised in councillor Coleman's amendment. And I'm more than happy to have her response to me, once, once I receive it, shared with all the members of this committee, including the non-elected members. So I suppose the first question I have for you, councillor Coleman, is, given that I've already written to the Cabinet Secretary, are you happy with that? And I'm happy once I receive that response to share it with the committee?
Yes, I suppose there would be no point duplicating work, in my opinion. And if, if you'd be grateful if you could share the letter that was sent as well, if that's okay, Mr Convena. And then look forward to the reply once it's received.
Okay, and certainly we'll do that. So just to, and also just to be clear that I will intend to, to share that with the non-elected members as well. I think it's important that the whole committee gets opportunity to, to see sight of that. So with that, with councillor Coleman's agreement that the amendment has been withdrawn with the agreement, I will send out the response once I get it. And I'll also share what I said as well. Is the committee happy with that? Okay, with that, that's been agreed.
Convena, can I just make a point?
Yeah, sorry, I didn't see you raising that point there.
Yeah, I think the point fundamentally is that point C and D in the amendment in councillor Coleman in my name does actually make some points I think we would certainly want included in the minute. And we're quite happy that point E is altered to indicate that you have written to Shirley Anne Somerville. In, you know, along the lines of what we say in the amendment. The fundamental point is we're not wanting the amendment actually dropped. What we're wanting is, we, we recognise the point that you've written to Shirley Anne Somerville and good for you in doing so. But we, we would want the points in C and D indicated in the, in, in the minute. And we would divide on that if you're not prepared to do that, because we think it's important that we do note with great concern the, 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 you know, the, the, and initial issues that were raised by committee have not as yet been addressed by government and the effect of the funding cut, what we say in C and D. And at E, we're quite happy to have that amended to indicate that you have written to the Cabinet Secretary for Education and Skills. But we wouldn't want just the amendment simply dropped, Convena.
Yeah, I've got no issue with that being included in the minutes. And I'm sure corporate services will ensure that that's done appropriately.
That's much appreciated. I'm sure officers will, as they always do in these cases, run it past yourself and, and councillor Coleman.
Okay, thanks very much for that. Okay, thanks very much for that. So that the thought point being made, is that agreed? Okay, so move on to the next item.
Item seven, instrumental music service update and overview. This is for noting.
So I think this is a really important item forward. I think the work that the instrumental service does is a pretty spectacular, I think. Sorry, excuse me, I've got a problem with my throat there. So and the work that Phil McGregor and his team is pretty amazing, as well as all the the teaching, the music teachers across the city. And I'm sure a lot of us have been at a variety of concerts over the last year or so, particularly the Christmas concerts, which have been quite spectacular, and that shows you the work that goes in place. And I think there's just something I just wanted to highlight that was in the report, which was mentioned. I attended the Christmas concert at Bel Dragon along with councillor Smith and the chief, the executive director. And I think one of the, I think it was quite a spectacular, quite emotional moment when some of our Ukrainian pupils, along with a member of staff who's also Ukrainian, sang a carol in Ukrainian with Scottish pupils singing along in Ukrainian with them. And I think that if anything of the last year, I think that was something that was really important and it was quite emotional for all of us who attended. And I think that's just one of the highlights that's in this report that I wanted to to mention, because I think that really was something that was really quite special. And I see councillor Crookshank, you have a question, so I'll bring you in at this stage.
It's more of a comment than a question there, convener, but thank you. And I too would like to welcome the report on music tuition and applaud the hard work of the talented tutors and those behind the scene who work together to make this happen. This is a million pound investment, which has delivered a direct benefit to thousands of children since the inception, including more than three thousand pupils this year. Access to the arts shouldn't be blocked by a family's financial circumstances. And I'm pleased that Dundee is leading the way on this. Thank you.
No, thank you for that that comment, councillor Crookshank, and I certainly agree with everything you've just said. Councillor Alexander.
Thanks, convener. Certainly agree with those comments. I think this report really illustrates the extent of the work that's on a daily basis undertaken by our music services across all of our schools, and it's incredibly impressive. And I think you and I both know how envious colleagues across Scotland are of the service that's provided in Dundee. And again, everybody on this call I'm sure knows I'm an eternal optimist, but I think this is a hugely positive report. It shows the value that we have placed in this service over consecutive years long before the national approach was taken. So I would like to think that, you know, certainly our administration in this council were a trailblazer in many ways in terms of the approach that we took, the investment within this area of service. And again, to acknowledge the significant return on that investment, we are talking about nearly a million pounds of investment. But look at how many schools, how many pupils across the city benefit from that investment. And as you say, I think all of us through local school, whether it's at Christmas or any other time of the year events, have seen the value and the incredible contribution of those young people and commitment of those young people. So really wanted to put that on record. Again, please, Audrey, pass back the thanks of the entire committee on behalf of Dundee City Council in terms of the work that they do. I look forward to it continuing. And again, the commitment of this administration certainly to the music service, I think, is is very clear and hopefully will continue long into the future, long after I'm retired as well.
So thank you for those comments as well, and you're quite right to talk about Dundee being a trailblazer. I I met just at the back end of last year with the Music Partnership Group, who were lobbying all children farmers or education conveners across the city to do, across the country, sorry, to do more investment into the into music and tuition, et cetera, in every local authority. And when they spoke to me, the first thing they said was, well, we don't need to lobby you because you already do it. And in fact, when we speak to other local authorities and they ask us, what do we need to do to improve? Their answer is go to Dundee and see what Dundee's doing. They're ahead of everybody. So I think that tells us what a great service we've got, and I think that should be recognized. And I think it's really important, this report is here tonight, and, you know, we're welcoming the great work that Phil and his team do. And I think it certainly is right that that goes back to all the staff in his team and to Phil, to thank them on behalf of the committee of the great work they do. And on a final point, I would just note that we won't be too far away from the spring concerts, which came back last year after our hiatus through the pandemic, which were fantastic. And I hope to see many of you at those those spring concerts to to support our young people and our staff who do a fantastic job, including all of the other things that will go on throughout the year in your schools, in your own ward, and also things like Dundee School Music Theatre. It'd be really good to see a number of you at that as well, supporting our young people. So with that, can this report be agreed? Thank you for that. Okay, Arlene.
Thanks, convener. External members of the committee will now leave the meeting and we'll move on to item eight, which is progress report on Paus Dundee. You're asked to agree the recommendations.
Yeah, thank you for this. I think this is a really important report as well. And before I bring in the members who want to speak, I think it's really important to see the progress that's been made with the women that Paus Project has has worked with over the last couple of years. And I know this was a really difficult project to start with. And I think it's to the credit of the whole committee that unanimously we supported this proposal right at the start and backed officers and supported the the women who've gone through the Paus Project. I think that's really important to remind everybody that that kind of stick that we took at the start for bringing this this programme in. We can see the outcomes for for women and the difference it has made in so many of their lives. And I think that's really important to reflect on that tonight. But councillor Smith, you wish to come in.
Thank you, convener. Really just echoing what you've just said. I just want to welcome this report and and really celebrate the the positive outcomes that have been achieved for the second cohort of women to go through Paus. I'd also like to to thank Paus for bringing the the project to Dundee and working in partnership with TESI Council and Alcohol and the council to to bring it to life and to make it happen. And I think that we're at an exciting point where we can take this forward now and shape it to fulfill more of what we desire to see happen in Dundee. And so I just think that this is a really positive stage, but really just want to thank everybody for their support for, I think, what has been a really groundbreaking programme in Dundee. And I think that the results we've seen so far, we can only build on them. So thank you.
No, thank you for those comments, and I certainly echo everything you've said. Councillor Crookshank, you wish to come in.
Thank you, convener. I welcome the report which outlines positive outcomes for the several women who have been supported by the activities of Paus Dundee. It goes to show what a difference it makes when nearly a quarter of a million pounds in funding is brought to the city. With the impending redesign of the service, have alternative funding sources been identified? Or will this be absorbed into the council's own budget? Further, what is the anticipated effect on capacity and deliverability of a confident that we will have sufficient resources to deliver the same standard of support to these vulnerable women? Thank you, convener.
No, thank you, councillor Crookshank. I see Mr Lloyd is on the call, so I'll just pass through over to Glenn, bypass all you on this occasion.
Thank you, convener. And thank you for the question, councillor Crookshank. And in terms of the funding, we are confident that through a combination of different funding streams, different sources, we will have sufficient funding to sustain the the programme. So first of all, a combination of funding from Dundee City Council, for instance, from the pending Whole Family Wellbeing Fund, potentially from other funding streams as as well. We're also conscious that we do have existing resources as well right across the system. We've alluded to that in the report. For instance, New Beginning Service, locality social work teams, a family nurse partnership. And in any redesign, we would want to consider their contributions to that. So for instance, staff can work across teams, supporting women with very, very similar overlapping needs. And I think we're confident in terms of capacity from that, that going forwards, if we do relax the criteria of the programme, for instance, from two children removed to one children removed. And if we do extend the criteria to include men and kinship care, then yes, we will have the capacity. But those are things that we need to work out in the coming five months. And those are things that we're outlining more detail in the report that we submit in June if this report is approved.
Okay, thank you for that, Mr Lloyd. Councillor Crookshank, are you happy with that response?
Yeah, thanks very much for that, Glenn. It's really encouraging that this project is going to be a mainstay within within Dundee. Thank you.
No, thank you for that. I don't see anybody else wishing to come in. So with that, is this report agreed? Okay, that's reported agreed, and that's the Children and Families Committee for this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, convener. The next committee is the City Development Committee.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City Development Committee. I believe, Elaine, you're on committee service, is right?
Right, you can be now.
Yep, over to you.
The item one, declaration of interest. Are there any declarations?
I don't see any declarations of interest, so just move on, please.
Okay, to item two, football parking eventually to traffic management scheme order 2021. This item is for approval.
Okay, this agenda notes in response to the statutory consultation that was carried out, and a number of observations were noted with the traffic order with some modifications to be done. Are there any comments or questions regarding this? I don't see any, so we'll just take that as agreed. Thank you. Next one, please, Elaine.
Item three, Esplanade area, Brody Ferry, variation of waiting restrictions order 2023. This is for approval.
Thank you. This item seeks approval for the the very regulation. Oh, excuse me, very regulation order restrictions on roads in the vicinity of Esplanade and Brody Ferry. The variation order is promoted to prevent the impairments to traffic flow and observation of visible sightlines following changes in road geometry introduced as part of the Brody Ferry Act of Travel Improvements. I see councillor Duncan, you're first, please.
Yeah, thanks, convener. Just I've got a couple of questions, but if I can begin by just seeking a bit of clarity from officers. Obviously, these works are coming along very well now. I was actually down there this afternoon, and I just want clarity. Are are some of these waiting restrictions that were being asked to approve tonight, are they related to the double yellow lines that have actually already appeared on large stretches of the Esplanade?
Mr McNorton, would you like to answer that question?
Yeah, thank you, convener, and thank you for the question, councillor Duncan. The yellow lines were put in early. The project team put the other lines in to alleviate some of the construction pinch points which do occur enough to a movie of phases. And again, so this has been requested as retrospective to the installation. So they're in at the moment as advisory lines, non-enforceable. But if this if this item is approved, we will then do the statutory consultations, public notices, and again, bring any objections back to committee before deciding whether or not to proceed.
Do you want to come back, councillor Duncan?
Yeah, thanks for that quality, Mr McNorton, because I did have one or two residents in Passas by asking me if these things were actually in effect yet. And I I I just was a bit non-posted and had said, well, it's coming to committee tonight, so don't ask me kind of thing. So but anyway, I'm I'm grateful for the quality. The other thing is I appreciate that it's still a work in progress. A couple of things I just want to ask officers to run it by, and they may well be already in hand. Some of the twenty mile per hour rondos are now missing from various sections of the Esplanade. Also missing from stretches of the Esplanade are the speed bumps. Indeed, there's half a speed bump left outside one part of the Esplanade. I'm just wondering, is that policy or are they going to be reinstated?
Yeah, you.
Yep, thank you, convener. So the the roundels will be reinstated on completion of the works. The speed dumps, the section between Rugby Terrace and Brook Street, they've been removed. They'll be replaced with speed tables at the junctions at one hundred and fifty meter spacings as an alternative form of traffic coming for the twenty mile an hour road.
So thanks, thanks, Mr McNorton. And just one very brief question. Again, it's arising from my talking to residents this afternoon. The 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 new sort of footpath in the cycle way, they are goods. The only thing, as I noticed myself, and some residents did say that it's not immediately clear to everybody who should be on which bit of it. I just wondered if there's any intention to put markings on it, like, you know, like a bicycle outline or something like that, if you so often.
Yeah, you.
Yep, thanks very much. The, yeah, the completed works will have a differentiation on the surfacing colour between the the cycleway and the carriageway and the footpath. In addition, there will be line markings, including a centre line on the cycleway for the bidirectional sections and also signage as well, indicating the footpath for pedestrians and cycle path for cycle users.
That's great. Thanks very much for all that. Thank you.
Thank you. Bailey Scott, please.
Thanks, convener. I had a useful conversation recently with the the transport and roads team to cover some of these issues that have been raised by councillor Duncan. And I was going to get clarification on some of those, particularly the one about the yellow lines already being painted in. So thank you for for that clarification. The other question I have, though, is in relation to the car park. It currently has got the works compound on it, but with the narrowing of the the Esplanade and this additional removal of parking spaces on the south side, it means that quite a number of spaces that could be utilized for on-street parking, if it was required, is no longer there. So can you confirm, please, that the site where the construction works compound is currently located will be restored and fully used as a car park again going forward?
Yeah, you.
Yep, thank you, Bailey Scott. I can confirm that the car park will be reinstated and it will be resurfaced with a cross rock or a road plane in aggregate to provide a complete surface to an improved standard to what was there before the works.
Thank you. Thank you very much. No, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Councillor Shears, please.
Yeah, thanks, convener. I'll make it a triple threat with having the double yellow lines mentioned to me as well. So thanks for councillor Duncan for bringing that up. But my comments are really just to thank officers for the work that they've been doing on the whole Esplanade area. Traffic in the ferry is a sticking point for a lot of people, and it takes up a lot of our inbox time. So it can't be easy at all to do what they're doing. So it's just a comment of thanks and impressive how they've gone about it.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure you'll pass it on to the team. Thank you very much. I see no further questions, so I can take the report as agreed. Thank you. Next one, Elaine, please.
Item four, roads maintenance and street lighting partnerships. This is for approval.
Thank you. This site provides details of their own maintenance and street lighting partnership performance for 2022. The final year and seeks approval to extend the partnership, which has been quite successful for the further five years to the 31st of March, 2028. Bailey McPherson, please.
Thanks, convener, and I very much support the recommendation. I think we would all agree that both the street lighting partnership and the road maintenance partnership do a good job with the resources that they have. And I have to say, the staff are extremely good at getting back to you regarding the all-too-many potholes and street lights and all the other issues that we get on an ongoing basis. However, I I wanted to make a comment because I I think it shows the the effect of year-on-year cuts to local government, just where we are with the resources available in in relation to our roads and pavements. I happened to have an exchange with the street lighting partnership manager back in October. It started off regarding a particular part of a street in my ward. But basically, what he was telling me was industry recommendations is a one in twenty year resurface for roads and a one in forty year resurface for footways. Roads in Dundee are now projected at a one percent resurfacing regime. In other words, if you see a road resurface, don't expect to see it resurface again in your lifetime, because it's a hundred years before it will be resurfaced again on average. In the case of footways, it might be your great, 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 great grandchild that sees it resurfaced as the we're sitting at a point four percent resurfacing programme. In other words, once every two hundred and fifty years. And and that's on the nine hundred and twenty five thousand that is currently in the in the the budget, which is going down, subject to the budget meeting, to six hundred and sixty thousand. So, oh, and and just by the way, the administration took away completely the unadopted pavements programme in the capital reductions, which we tried unsuccessfully to stop happening. I'm not having a go at the administration. We have tried previous revenue budgets to put in some capital as one-offs, and we'll probably undoubtedly try to do so in future years as well. But having said that, that's a little bit like the finger in the dam of the real effects of the reduction year-on-year of the funding that is available for
Have a question here, Bailey, certainly.
No, I never said a hundred. No, I never said a hundred question, convener. The word in the line is comment, please, and that's what I'm making, if you don't mind. So the point I make is, and I'm not having a go at the administration specifically, I'm making the point that we have a long-term challenge facing our roads and pavements. And I'm sure if we speak to colleagues in our neighbouring authorities and across Scotland, they're in exactly the same position. The point is that the roads' quality, the pavements' quality is going to continue to reduce. And that's in no way the fault of the staff who do an excellent job. But I think it just highlights the worrying situation affecting the quality of our roads and pavements into the future. Thank you, convener.
Thank you. I think the report was actually attached to the the report itself on the performance of the roads and pavements, as actually our roads and footways, shows quite a good quality within the city itself, and I hope that to continue. And I'll take on board your comments. I see no other questions. Move on, please, Elaine.
Item five, National Planning Framework IV. You have the report before you.
This report updates members on the approval of MPF IV, which will shape the future of land use planning in Scotland. Members should also note that since this committee report was issued, the Scottish Government has confirmed that MPF IV will be adopted on the 13th of February 2023. This date, MPF IV will become part of the statutory development plan and will require to be considered by the council on determining planning applications. Members should also note that at the same time, the strategic development plan, day plan, will cease to be part of the development plan. And in due course, MPF IV will help shape and review of the Dundee local development plan. Any questions or comments? I don't see any, so we'll just take that as agreed. Thank you very much. Next one, please, Elaine. Oh, sorry, councillor Rome, Doris. See, put your hand up.
Hi, convener. I was getting there, but technology let me down a bit. And I was just going to ask officers to confirm that, once this has all been sorted, that there'll be a briefing for elected members at the most appropriate point, just so they can get their their head around the complexities that that come in with these changes.
Mr Hamilton, would you like to come back?
Yes, I'll confirm that that is the case. We are awaiting a further letter from the chief planner from the Scottish Government, just confirming the transitional arrangements, but we will be arranging that briefing that councillor Rome referred to.
Okay, thank you very much. I see no other questions or comments or hands up. So I'll take that as agreed. Thank you. Elaine, please.
Item six, City Centre Strategic Investment Plan, Commercial Street Enhancement. You have the report before you.
Thank you. This report seeks approval to implement streetscape improvements at the Commercial Street, Murray Gate Junction, delivering one of the action plans contained in the City Centre Strategic Investment Plan. The works will improve pedestrian safety and reduce legal parking and movers, as well as significantly enhancing the public realm of this key junction between the two city principal streets. Councillor Elaine, please.
Yeah, thank you, convener. I've always thought that the junction of Murray Gate and and Commercial Street was a bit odd, given that it's a pedestrian area which is intersected by a roadway with with vehicles. And I'm really pleased to see these works taking place because I think that the reduction to to one lane will will make a difference in terms of slowing traffic for sure and make it safer for pedestrians. There's mention in the report about illegal use by private vehicles. And I've seen in the past the the police doing spot checks on that and stopping drivers to either warn them or, I don't know, perhaps find them. Is it anticipated that these works will will have any impact on private vehicle use? Or would we need to ask the police to to monitor that?
Thank you for that. I certainly hope has an impact on private vehicle use and they do not use the area because they shouldn't be using it. It's primarily a bus and taxi. But I'll bring in Mr McNorton to answer that.
Yep, thank you, convener, and thank you for the question, councillor. The the police will continue to undertake the the regular patrols which they do for illegal compliance issues. The landscape or the environmental layout of the junction, we believe, will support more compliance, particularly on vehicles accessing Murray Gate. And again, we've got some base data from the PCNs that we, sorry, the penalty charge notices that we we do, that we can measure that success of as well. In addition, with feedback from the police, we have consulted with the police. They are in support of the proposals and they also see that it's a good logical development to make it more visually apparent that the prioritisation for the pedestrians and also the the access as well.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks for that.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Scullen, please.
Hi, yeah, I've just got a couple of questions. Although I've got no problem with this project in principle, because I know it was part of the strategic investment plan that was passed, I'm just wondering why this project especially was deemed one of the most important ones in the city centre plan to do above others. Because I can't think of any accidents I've ever seen here, but I have asked for some actual figures on that. And why is over half of the £717,000 in funding, which has been given for town centre revitalisation, community-led regeneration, 20-minute neighbourhoods and community wealth building, being used for what is essentially a small traffic management system? Is that the best use of that money?
Mr Hamilton, would you like to come back on that, please?
Can you know, maybe answer the the second point raised by councillor Scullen and ask Mr McNorton to pick up the the second or the first part. I think I would refer back to the City Centre Strategic Investment Plan that was approved by the City Development Committee back in October, which highlighted the importance of the city centre to the lives, not just of those who live within the vicinity, but the whole of the city. Because most people at some point will look to the city centre for whether that is for work, for leisure, where they shop. And that the success of the city centre does have a direct impact on the success of the broader city. So the the requirements of the use of the funding certainly are aligned with the ambitions and objectives of the City Centre Strategic Investment Plan. Hence, that town centre regeneration focus, improving the city centre will benefit everyone in Dundee.
Thank you. Ewan, would you like to come back in the city aspects?
Yeah, thanks very much, convener. The so the junctions, the last recorded accident was in 2013, which was a pedestrian accident. Pedestrian struck by a vehicle, although only a slight accident, to be thankful. The recorded road speeds was the last traffic surveys were in October 2020, and they did record an average speed of 20 miles an hour. But within that average speed, there were some higher ones towards the 30 miles an hour recorded also. One of the particular features of this scheme is not just the road safety about the junction, which is an important part of it, but also the compliance with the accessing Murray Gate as well to really create that public realm aspect for the entire of Murray Gate from removing the the illegal vehicles, particularly around the delivery drivers and so forth as well. So it's it's got a number of benefits in addition to just road safety, the scheme.
Thank you. You want to come back, Wendy?
No, 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 it's okay. I I just personally, as I walk through the city centre every single day, more than twice a day sometimes, and I see a lot of other things that this money, I feel that this money could be spent on, especially other roads around the city centre, not just this tiny little part where there's no accidents.
No, I think it's all part of the master plan to actually improve the city centre step by step. So I'm quite seeing connecting up two parts of the city centre, which are quite dysfunctional at the current time. So I think this is a progressive step personally. Councillor Creekshank, please.
Thank you, convener. The proposals to enhance pedestrian safety and reduce illegal manoeuvres by reorganising the layout of Commercial Street at the junction with the Murray Gate is welcome. Can I ask, though, although the narrowing of the carriageway is evidently sensible for day-to-day purposes, it must be noted that the number of bus movements in Commercial Street increases significantly when events such as the garden require the closure of Shaw Terrace Bus Way. Can officers please confirm that consideration has been given to this fact? And what additional support or resources may be necessary to keep buses moving efficiently throughout this location? Thank you.
I'll pass it over to Ewan, and that's probably for your side.
Yeah, thank you, convener, and thank you for the the question, councillor Crekshanks. The the priority give-take system has been assessed on the traffic flows, both the the existing and the forecast. And it's it's sufficient enough that we'll not have significant delays or queuing for the buses. There will be, if we achieve the, as is targeted, the aim for, the reduction in unauthorised vehicle access, we'll get some betterments both in terms of congestion and also specifically at the traffic signal control junctions at either side of the street, where the queue times will be reduced through lesser vehicle movements. So again, we'll actually see some benefits to the the just bus journey time movements as well from the scheme when it works as intended.
Thank you. Georgia, ready to come back?
No, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. I see no further questions or comments. We'll take that report as agreed. Thank you, Elaine.
Item seven, award of business gateway contract. You're asked to agree the recommendations.
Thank you. This report simply to seek approval for the award of the business gateway test and digital boost service contracts. The contracts will run from April 23 to March 25, with the option to extend the contract up to three additional single years until March 28. Following tender process, companies asked to approve the awards of services to elevator. I don't see any questions or comments, so we'll take that as agreed. Thank you. Next one, Elaine, please.
Item eight, tenders received by head of design and property and head of sustainable transport and roads. This is for approval.
Thank you. This item seeks approval to accept eight tenders of combined expenditure of region of 1.8 million for construction and various infrastructure works across the city. Councillor Coleman, please.
Thank you, Mr convener. The CCTV at Carpenter House is absolutely necessary and I've no issues with that. I just wondered if we're spending spending about £90,000 on this, can officers give an update on progress towards having this beautiful building back into positive and full-time use?
Neil, you have to comment on the CCTV tender and see if.
Thanks, convener. Councillor Coleman, could you just repeat the first bit of your question? The the sound seemed to go off there in terms of the specifics.
I just say, I mean, the CCTV, I agree, is necessary. And just given we're spending nearly £90,000, I wonder if you can give an update on progress towards having this beautiful building back into positive and full-time use?
That's okay, Neil. I'll pass it on to Robin. Mr Presswood?
Convener, many thanks. I confirm that, as members are aware, there was previously a dialogue with a potential interested party that continued throughout the period of the pandemic. But unfortunately, due to the broader economic downturn caused by that, we weren't able to conclude those negotiations. And we continue to promote the building and periodically do have interested partners. At the moment, we don't have any firm party, but obviously we will bring back a report to the committee as soon as we do have proposals. I think it's fair to say that this type of property has historically been challenging to find an end useful. But increasingly, I think the tourism market is now prepared to consider interesting but challenging listed buildings such as this one for a range of uses. So I do hope that we we may be in a position to bring back a report over the coming months.
Thanks, Robin. Daniel, do you want to come back? Is that? He's frozen. Take that, he's frozen up. Okay, there's no further questions or comments, so just take that report as read. And that's the city development business for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, convener. The final committee this evening is the Policy and Resources Committee.
Good evening, folks. I'll just get straight on with the business. Willie?
Yeah, thanks very much, convener. Firstly, are there any declarations of interest?
Declarations. See no rush to notify us, so I'll take that as a no. Thank you.
Thanks very much. There have been no declarations. Take show on to item two, housing revenue budget and review of rents and other housing charges. You're asked to agree the recommendations.
Members will remember that we previously considered a report in terms of the consultation and the options that were related to that. I will defer to the convener of neighbourhood services, who I'm sure will want to say some more on the substance of the report. Heather?
Thank you, convener. As convener of neighbourhood services, I welcome this report asking us to note the outcome of the rent consultation and to give our approval for a rent increase of 3%. This will result in an average increase of £2.41 per week and any increase will be capped at £3. The report also asks us to increase charges by 3% and approve the budget of £56.5 million revenue and £120 million over five years. I just wanted to say something because I know that when we first considered this rent consultation, the Scottish Government had just frozen rents in across Scotland and, you know, energy costs were spiralling, the cost of living crisis was exploding. And I would know that every one of us in this room were concerned about putting any additional pressure on our tenants. So I'm therefore relieved that we have navigated our way to this point and that what we've come up with here is a very fair and responsible set of proposals. I understand previously that what we would have done before was try to be within 1% of the current rate of inflation. And in the current circumstances, that would have been a 14.3% increase. So I think we've done really well to restrict the proposed increase to 3% and enable us to continue investment in our stock and balance the budget. I just want to say thank you to Elaine and Louise and the team for the amazing work they've done to make sure that that budget balances and that we've kept the increase that low. Looking at the consultation, I've noted that one in three of our tenants almost were happy with the higher increase. And I'm really pleased that we've managed to efficiently use 500,000 of reserves to increase the hardship fund to ensure that nobody is financially disadvantaged. Everybody on this committee will know that the vast majority of our tenants receive social security to cover this increased rent cost. But this additional hardship fund money will ensure that anyone not in receipt of universal credit or housing benefit will be credited with the cost. And a report will be coming back to you on how we do that in the most dignified way possible. So I'm just wanting to say it's good to get to this point. I hope that there's going to be unanimous approval. Thank you.
Thanks very much for your comments. Councillor Anderson certainly endorsed them. And again, I think it's a testament to the work of all of our staff in terms of the level of feedback from tenants. I mean, if you consider or compare with other housing associations, other councils across Scotland, I think we would compare very favourably in terms of the response rate because I think, again, officers are very proactive in terms of seeking that engagement, not just through community groups, housing groups, but also through individuals, through our shelter tenants and any other forum that we can possibly speak to our tenants and and get their feedback. And as you say, I think it's a testament to the work that's been undertaken that one in three roughly of our tenants did vote for a higher level of increase. And I think that's probably very much focused on the improvements that we've seen in terms of external wall insulation, etc. So I think it's a vote of confidence in those works, but of course, there's other considerations for people right now, particularly cost of living. So absolutely agree with your comments on that. I'll come to councillor Crekshank next. Georgia?
Thank you, convener. A note in section 6.4 of the HRE report that the hardship fund is on track to be fully utilised in the financial year. Currently, the fund is worth 500K and a one-off increase is proposed to double it to 1 million in the next financial year, with the scope also widened to include tenants who don't receive housing benefit. Given the increase and the expansion of the the fund, has there been any early discussions about keeping the hardship fund open to non-housing benefit tenants beyond 2024 if required? Thank you.
Thanks for the question, Georgia. I'll ask Louise, perhaps, to come in in just a moment. But just to say initially, I think the reality is, of course, we'll we'll be back at this conversation at the tail end of this year as we go back out to consider the options for further consideration for tenants, looking at future years. And this is an annual exercise, so there'll be an opportunity for all elected members to inform that process, put forward their views in terms of the sustainability of the fund or the level of the fund and also the parameters around that. But Louise, do you want to come in just on that point, please?
Yeah, thank you, councillor Alexander, and thank you for the question, councillor Crekshank. And I think councillor Alexander, you've pretty much covered it. The report sets out this is a one-off increase within this financial year coming. And we'll be back around looking at the budget setting towards later this year and bringing a report back to committee as we did in October with recommendations for setting that budget.
Thanks very much, Louise. Dorothy, can see your hand up. Councillor McHugh?
Thank you, and apologies, my chat function doesn't seem to work on this laptop.
Thank you and apologies. My chat function doesn't seem to work on this laptop.
I'll let you off on this occasion.
Sorry, I have a question relating to item 5.2. Over many years, there's been significant investment made in external wall insulation. And this was promoted, I remember at the time, to tenants as reducing, having the potential to reduce their energy costs by, I think what they said at the time was £150 a year. Could officers, I wonder, bring an update report on the success or otherwise of this energy reducing, cost reducing potential of this, the external wall insulation? Thank you.
Thanks very much for the question. I think that information is reported through a number of different mechanisms, including the best value review group, but also through reports that do come through neighbourhood services committee. I suppose just initially, and then I'll come to officers to say, and I know you'll appreciate this as will all other elected members, it's incredibly complex. So in some senses, no matter how much money we spend improving the fabric of the building, if the energy costs go up by a significant margin, that might very much outmaneuver the moves in which we've made to improve the situation for people. So there is this kind of triple helix in terms of the issues that we need to address. One is people's, you know, how much money they have in their pocket, the availability of funding in that household. There is the cost of energy, which is the other part of that equation, and then, of course, the fabric of the building. Now, we can try as much as we wish to impact or improve the situation in terms of the amount of money in people's pockets. And we do that through a number of different initiatives, not only creating good employment or raising aspirations. And of course, the work that we do through the fairness agenda on the energy prices. I think we're fairly limited in terms of our ability to impact on that. But where we can make the most significant impact, I think we have, and we can demonstrate that through the investment that's been undertaken. So I think I'm right in saying, and I might be slightly out of kilter with my figures because I'm no longer the convener of neighbourhood services, but we spent in excess of £50 million improving more than 5,000 properties. And I remember from my days as convener of neighbourhood services, both the direct conversations I had with tenants around the improvements that they felt directly, both in their pocket, but also in terms of the warmth of the property, but also some of the reports that came back at that time. So I think I've probably given you a long-winded answer there and apologies again to officers stolen their thunder ever so slightly. But Elaine, can I maybe come to you in the first instance, just to kind of give that overview in terms of the work and again, the feedback that we've had and how that's reported? Thanks.
Thank you very much, convener, and thank you, councillor McHugh, for your question. What we do know is that the external wall installation does improve the energy efficiency rating of the property. And we have empirical evidence that supports that. As councillor Alexander has said, you know, there are a number of factors that impact on fuel poverty, not least the cost of energy. But we do know that external wall insulation does reduce the required amount of energy needed to maintain that property. So, but it is a wider, complicated assessment in terms of the fuel poverty calculation, because it does depend on increasing energy costs as well. But we do have empirical evidence of the energy efficiency rating. I don't know if Louise Butcher wants to add anything to that.
Thanks, Elaine. And I think just to add that the next external wall installation programme that will be coming to committee in February, what we will be doing is monitoring the impacts and the improvements in the properties. And we'll be reporting that back through the housing best value review group as we get those results back.
Thanks very much for that confirmation. I've seen other questions on this report, so can I take this as agreed, please? Thank you very much. Willie?
Thank you. Next one, item three, treasury management activity. Mid-year review. This is a report for noting.
Again, I think this is a positive report. It shows the extent of the council's team in terms of treasury management and the work that they've been undertaking to solidly manage, I think, the council's finances and investments over the last year. I think it's worth noting, and I would like to highlight section eight, which refers to just some of the impact, I suppose, of the disastrous mini-budget, which cost Dundee City Council's investment more than a million pounds, which I think there'll be unanimous agreement with is a bit of a disaster. But thankfully, these are long-term investments and I hope that over the longer term, they will recover from the shock of that mini-budget. Again, just to say that this is a positive report. I think it shows good management in terms of the treasury function within the council. And I want to convey that and thank the team as well. Is there any questions, comments on this report? No? Okay, can I take this as agreed? Thank you very much. Willie?
Okay, and lastly, item four, before his free school meal expansion capital funding agenda. You're asked to agree the terms of the note.
Again, I think this is incredibly positive report. It shows that there is significant investment, again, within our school estates in terms of the improvements associated with free school meal delivery. And this is £635,000 of investment over the next year to carry out those works supported by Scottish government. And I think it's worthwhile, not just talking about the numerical figures in terms of the value of that investment, but the kids that sit behind that. And the rollout of free school meals will benefit in primaries one to five, 7,014 pupils, which I think is incredible and a testament to the work that's been undertaken in recent years to expand that and to improve the situation for young people. And we know how challenging life is right now for so many in our communities. And I think, again, this is one example of where we can make a contribution, where we can support both the pupils and the wider families in providing those meals during the school day. I can see there's a couple of questions, comments on this, so I'll come to Bailey McPherson first.
Thanks, convener, and I agree with everything you've said. However, the Scottish government postponed the August 2022 rollout of P6 and P7 free school meals and the original timescale with regard to that. And I was just really wondering if if officers are able to confirm if there's been any feedback from Scottish government. As I understand it, there's an assurance it will happen. It's just the time scale was kicked back. And I was just really wondering if officers have had any feedback from Scottish government as to the revised time scale to ensure that this is rolled out to P6 and P7 pupils in due course?
Thanks for the question, Fraser. It's not directly related to the capital investment. However, I did introduce the notion of looking at the wider context. So happy to bring in Audrey at this point to perhaps provide some clarity on that. Audrey?
Thanks, convener, and thanks, Billy McPherson. Yeah, there's still ongoing discussions and I don't feel I have a finalized time scale for you. But I know through the RDS resources network, there's regular feedback around exactly this kind of piece of the work, if you like. Now that the capital funding is released, you know, at what stage we'll be able to get everything in place to be able to roll it out right across up to include in primary seven. So there's no final date just now, but it is an ongoing discussion in wider networks.
Thanks for that, Mrs. May. Could I perhaps ask, and I'll move it if necessary, but I don't think it should be. Would it be possible to just ask the chief executive if he could write to the cabinet secretary just to get some indication as to how Scottish government is minded in relation to that? So would the chief executive have any objection to that happening? If, you know, if you've got a problem with that, convener, I'd be quite happy to move something.
No, I don't have a particular problem with it. I'm not sure. Well, I was going to suggest that actually it might be best in the first instance for the chief executive to discuss with Cosley, who will be working directly with Scottish government officials on this item, rather than circumventing Cosley, who are obviously the negotiating bodies. So with your agreement, I think Cosley and the chief executive having that discussion to see what conversations have been taking place and facilitate the feedback to committee and all the members on it.
Well, what I would say in regard to that, and I'm happy that that's done in the first instance, but if we get back the, well, there's still an ongoing discussion. I would then really want the chief executive to write to the Scottish government, the cabinet secretary. I should say that the first minister has been on record as saying that this is going to happen and that the August 2022 rollout being pushed back was only temporary. And that's why it's not an unreasonable thing to get some clarity from Scottish government as to when they're going to do this. So I have no problem with what you're suggesting that the chief executive will take it up with Cosley. But if we get back, and I would like that circulated when we get that response. If that response is, well, there's no clarity yet, then I would really want us as a council to be writing to the cabinet secretaries to try and get that assurance if that's okay.
Thanks, Fraser. I think that was a long-winded way of saying that you agree. And if we don't get the response with any detail, we'll ask for a further letter. So happy for that. And I think the chief executive would be happy to have that conversation and feedback.
Thanks for that. Yeah, I'm happy with that, although I'm never long-winded, convener. Thank you.
I'm saying nothing, Fraser. Can I bring in the convener of children and family service at this point, Stuart?
Yeah, I'll definitely try not to be a long-winded convener to avoid them telling me off. Just to say, I just want to wholeheartedly agree with the comments you made at the start. I think this is really important. I appreciate what we've got in front of us is just about the capital part of it going forward. But I think we've seen the difference in going back to my committee earlier on this evening, we talked about the cost of school day and some of the things we talked about with attainment. The difference of actually being able to give these free school meals to our young people is really important. And I certainly look forward to seeing it being rolled out to the other stages in primary schools as well. So I really just want to echo the comments you made at the start and really highlight the differences it's made to young people in the city and across Scotland. And really commend the Scottish government for bringing this forward and the finance for us to be able to deliver this. And I think that should go on record. So thank you, convener.
Thanks very much, councillor Hunter. Appreciate those comments. I will now come to councillor Crookshank. Georgia?
Thank you, convener. Obviously, Fraser asked the question about the six and seven. But I would like to make, to add something to that in relation to the likes of the High School of Dundee having finally been stripped of charitable status, tax breaks. And the public first stands to benefit from an extra £5,000, £7 million each year. Would it be possible to ask the Scottish government that some of that money stays within Dundee and helps to pay for the six, the seven-year-olds? Primary six and seven free school meals?
Thanks for the question, Georgia. Couple of things, I suppose. First of all, I think I'm trying not to get too far away from the item that's before us, which is about the capital investment that we're being asked to agree on. But except your question, the premise of that question, the one thing I would say is, obviously, it's a national scheme. So I don't think it's just about asking for Dundee to keep its money because it has to be a coordinated approach across all 32 local authorities. So perhaps I just ask the chief executive again, when he's in discussion with Cosley, to reflect on that and ask for feedback on that specific point, Georgia, and then we can include that in the feedback that is circulated around all 32 local members. Or 29?
Thanks, John. Much appreciated.
Thank you, Georgia. I'll come to councillor Rome. Stephen?
Thank you, convener. Just like yourself and councillor Hunter, just to welcome this investment from the Scottish government and also to note that I know that a lot of work has been done between children and families and tayside contracts and to look into the reasons why and take up, it doesn't happen where it could happen. And one of the reasons given is the lack of capacity and the excuse of the lack of capacity, if I can put it like that. And when it comes to children telling their parents why they didn't stay at school. And I know that's more a problem for secondary than the primary, but it does happen with older primary school pupils as to why they don't stay at school. So I think it's excellent that we've got this commitment going forward and I look forward to the extension of it, as you previously said.
Thanks very much for those comments, Stephen. Appreciate it. And I think you got the last word. So with all of that, can I take this item as agreed? Thank you very much. That's the business. Have a great evening, have a good week, and I shall see you all later. Thanks, everyone.